Good evening, I'd like to open the Deerfield Planning Board meeting, November 19th, 2018, at 7:10 in the municipal offices. Our agenda is to look at any minutes we have from previous meetings, review mail, take some public comment, and then we have a continuation of a public hearing for a site plan review of a solar installation project on Set Right Road submitted by SWCA on behalf of Hexagon Energy. Location is map 142, lots 40 and lots 20 and 22. And then we'll take up any business not reasonably anticipated 48 hours prior to the posting of this meeting, and we'll set a date for the next meeting, and adjourn. Any comments on the agenda, additions?
No.
Subtractions? Do we have any minutes?
No.
Minutes to review, alright. Then I'd like to actually add maybe to the other businesses, just to get a summary of the last meeting of last week's.
I've got my notes from the last meeting.
Alright, so we'll just talk about that, and I'd also say let's just set our agenda for the next meeting, which is I think scheduled for December 10th. Alright, any mail?
Is that 7, John? 7:10 we opened. Is that what you asked?
Nope.
You said that we have a meeting on the 10th of December, is that at 7 o'clock? Oh, December 10th at 7 o'clock, yes.
And then we usually leave a minute or two if anybody in the public has a comment now on anything that's not on the agenda. This would be a time to... Any questions, comments about anything that's not on the agenda? Great, then we'll go to the next thing, which is to open the...
Continued?
The continued public hearing, so I just want to get the... See if I can find that announcement. Actually, it should be in the box, do we have anything? Alright, I'd like to open the public hearing that's been continued from November 8th. And it is, it's a public hearing pursuant to sections 5400 and 2200 of the Deerfield zoning bylaws to review plans, including site plan and stormwater, special permits submitted by SWCA Environmental Consultants on behalf of Hexagon Energy LLC for the development of property along Set Right Road for a 2.0 megawatt AC solar array on properties currently owned and farmed by Chester Ostauski. Copies of the site plan have been available during town, for review at town offices during regular business hours. Any person interested or wishing to be heard should appear at a time and place designated. So, we've had a few meetings on this already. So what I'd like to do is continue, and we did get a letter from, so we've hired two technical reviewers to help the town on this one, as an engineer, and this is the letter that she submitted. The other is Pat Smith from the Council of Governments, who's not able to be here tonight, but she did send a letter, and I will, unfortunately, we didn't get to get it in time to print it or anything, but I'll read some comments from that.
Will I find that on my computer?
Yeah, she sent an email about a half, just like a half hour ago.
I can put that in the minutes.
Yeah. So there were three things that our civil engineer reviewer wanted to follow up on, and that is confirmation that the site area is in fact under 10 acres, which makes it a large solar array. The other is to look at the requirements of the road improvements for the surface of the Set Right Road. And the other is to confirm the runoff characteristics of the solar installment. So our consultant, Sarah Campbell, got verbal assurance that this is a 9.95 acre project, so we just want to verify that tonight. We were hoping to hear from our highway superintendent, I'm not sure, I did not.
I did.
Okay, good, so you can say something about that. And then regarding the runoff characteristics, she feels comfortable that everything is in order there, is the fact that with the grasses that they're using, what it says here is that the solar panels themselves do not have a significant impact on volumes of runoff, peak rates of runoff, or time of that peak runoff. Using the ground cover on the panels, as the applicant did in the analysis, was shown to adequately estimate the post-development runoff characteristics. So those are the things. So the other question we had is, do we have new plans? Because we've made lots of comments, so I guess if you guys could just, the applicants just again introduce yourself and tell us what changes we've had since the last meeting.
Sure. I'm Meredith Savage with SWCA, and representing on behalf of Hexagon Energy, and Scott Reamer here is with Hexagon. And I just handed in, I think you just put it off to the side there, a memo that answered...
Do you have it?
Oh yeah, right here.
There is a memo that addresses the comments that were emailed to us, and number one, the calculation of the solar array is indeed 9.95. We checked it, it's checked through the CAD drawing system, so it's literally a polygon. And indeed, as shown on sheet three, here, as shown on sheet three, it is the area that is within the fence line here, and it is 9.95 acres. And then in the memo, I make the note that the confusion may have stemmed from the fact that...
These are new sets of plans. These are due July 17th.
The area within...
So just to, sorry not to cut you off, so we have plans, are we looking at old plans? That's what, that was my question, do we have a set of new plans?
This one's dated 7/17.
And that doesn't say 9.95.
And on three, on this one, we don't have either.
Did I not bring in a set of plans? No, 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 you all do have the most recent set. You have your revision date right here.
Okay, 11/8.
Yes, and so you had those, the plans that you received at the last hearing were the updated plans, and they have everything on it that was requested, and it was all here, and I can go through that, but that's item number five.
You go down here, let me check. Okay, good.
The confusion on the site areas, 7th front lot, I believe is sheet two.
Yeah.
Around the center there.
Okay, that's what it was.
11.5, yeah, 11...
11.5.
11.9. So that's the difference, and we have to show both on the plans. Okay, so number two, it was a request, written confirmation for the town of Deerfield regarding Set Right Road, and we tried multiple times, we know this is an incredibly busy time for the town superintendent, but we have tried multiple times via email and voice messages to get in contact with him, and we weren't able to, and so in the memo, I just note that your town bylaws do say that if you don't get a response, it's considered not an objection. That being said, we would expect that a simple condition, which I believe in the second document that you got from...
From Pat.
Yes, from Pat.
...condition, if I do this negative, any use or waste or local consent at all. It will state federal requirements, which you have to decide more than what I can.
And, and of course, in addition to that, obviously, everything, I mean, the roads get signed off by the superintendent, and so if it is not, it's in Hexagon's best interest to work with the superintendent to make sure that they are constructed accordingly.
I didn't speak formally with him a while ago, actually, with the summer, and he provided the comment, and he said that he'd be happy to follow it, was what he told me, and I haven't been able to contact him since, despite calling you a couple different numbers and emails and...
And then the third area was with regards to clearing up whether the site as shown in location two was actually correct, and it was, and Scott can address that, and you have that there as well.
Yeah, the graphic here. Turns out, shows, you can see two trees visible, calling this one Set Right Road tree, and this one the field tree, for all to see.
Well, no, you can, yeah, you can leave it up there, we want people on TV to see it too, I guess, but...
Shows that using photo imagery, the only trees visible on the field is this one here in the corner, which is the field tree, this one, which is the Set Right Road tree. So this encapsulates the whole, the whole project area. It's a wide angle lens that we use to take the picture to be able to show everything, so happy to leave this copy here.
Alright, thanks. Alright, good.
Okay, and then there was a question regarding the estimated number of trucks during construction, and our engineer provided a figure that they, that he estimated that it would be less than 75 trucks, and what I did was I went back into some of other solar projects that SWCA has worked on, and for a 4.4 megawatt project that's going into West Hampton, the estimate there was, was 54 large truck deliveries over a three to four month period, and then you can see that it's broken down 33 truckloads of panels, 12 of racking. So that just gives you an idea, and that's for a project that's not quite two times the size of this one. So, yeah, right, it is more, right, okay, so it's over two times the size. So you can expect that the number of trucks would be considerably less than the 75 figure that we just threw out, and likely be less than 50.
And that's over a three-month period, and it's with hours of operation?
With much required by the town.
Yes.
Standard daily hours of operation, whether a police officer provide any traffic control measures. And that's, that's right now, and that's recommendations.
And then finally, regarding the updated plans, it does throw people off to read July 17th, but we have down on the cover page, you typically always keep the original date that was submitted, when the permit was first submitted, and then the revisions are shown in the block here, and the latest is 1108, and that's these plans. And some of the information that was requested was that the plans clearly show fencing, and on, walking through the line sheet, 2.1, the fence is clearly shown, in the sort of a line with little box on it, so the fence line of the project is clearly shown. The undergrounding of utilities, there is a line that says E here, and that is the utility line, and it is all underground, and it states on the plans, underground electric wire, which takes it out to the interconnection point on Set Right. And it asks for screening placement, and we show screening here to the north and to the west, areas where, and then again here along the west property line.
Is Set Right Road in there?
Set Right Road would be up here.
Sheet 3.0 provides details on the pollinator mix, it's a grass and forb mix, pollinator species, and it's provided right here, pollinator wildflower seed mix, and it also provides the description of the plants, the species that will go in for the screening, gets the size, the container plant, approximately 290. You have a screening diagram that shows that plants are set 10 feet on center, but the lines are staggered, so they are five feet apart. And that is, we do have the basic showing how the access road, the entrance to the access road, and just the basic information on that, the cross-sections, and again, the final access, I mean, the details are typically worked out with the superintendent. So, we did have all of this at the last hearing, and hopefully we have now cleared up the vision. I did, what I didn't get to show at the last hearing is this page. And I can leave it up here for a second for the viewing audience to see, and then I can bring it, oh, you've got it right there, of course. And what it shows is, one, the tremendous distance, it's just under a quarter mile at 1,100 feet from Set Right Road to where the screening will be. And a little bit further on then is the start of the panels. As you can see, the ground is, the topography is slightly domed, and the panels are actually set down slope, so that the line of sight from Set Right Road will come skim across the top of the domed area topographically, and obviously keep going, and the panels will be well below that line of sight.
Thank you.
You're welcome, or there, unless there's anything you'd like to add, Scott?
Alright, so if I can go through some of our, so our administrative technical assistance, Pat Smith's letter, she goes through the list of documents that she reviewed, which include the special permit application, the site plans, dated the three different, three or four different ones, the special permit application, two letters from our Sarah Campbell, feedback from the town boards, we do need one from the PPW superintendent, and there's a letter from Dan Conlon, which is in the One Colla Apriliaries, which I read last time about that this, the grasses are good for bees, pollinators. And this does fit into a large solar under our current standards. One thing we have to fix, actually, just to remind everybody, is that we said it's two megawatts or less is large, two to six is extra-large, but we didn't say whether that's AC or DC, and there's a difference, imagine that. So basically, we're giving, whenever applicants come, until we correct this, we're giving you whichever, you know, the more lenient one. In this case, it's actually, is D, AC is two megawatts, if you did, if this was DC, it would be over two megawatts, but we'll call it two megawatts AC. Alright, so, soils, alright. So the review process, the public hearing was opened back in August, August 20th at 7 o'clock, continued September 17th, continued to October 29th, that meeting was canceled, continued to November 8th, and then continued till tonight. We hired the two consultants, at the applicants, the applicants paid for both of them. Alright, where's our issues here? Alright, so stormwater drainage, including the means of ultimate disposal and calculations and compliance with the town stormwater bylaw, being chapter 155 of Deerfield general bylaws, and that was met, and then we have the reports from Sarah Campbell saying that the drainage is okay. Existing trees, 10 inches caliper are better, and existing tree/shrub masses, proposed planting, landscape and screening, that that's been met. It's now an agricultural field, so that, it seems like the grasses and the other ground cover is actually going to be better, more absorbent than what's there now. Operations and maintenance plan is partially met, we do need some more, that was in your original appendix G of the special permit application, does not address roadway maintenance or specific requirements for ongoing maintenance of the pollinator plants under the arrays.
We'll be happy, that's one of the conditions that she proposed.
Yeah.
Happy to provide more detail around that.
So that would be something that we just still would need, is the full operations and maintenance plan. Insurance, the project applicant shall provide proof of liability insurance in an amount sufficient to cover loss or damage to persons and structures occasioned by the use or failure of the solar electric installation, that's met. See appendix H. Financial surety, partially met, see appendix I of the special permit application materials dated July 2018, which includes a decommissioning estimate for the cost of removal of the solar installation. Applicants shall negotiate a decommissioning plan, that's not finished yet, and execute a form of financial surety for the town of Deerfield that meets the requirements of the planning board. So that's, we did that with the other one too, about if they just walked away, that we would have money to decommission it if necessary.
Yeah, and I think we did agree to an insured bond value that was posted in the back, so that's part of it, happy to provide more detail around it.
So I think that's the amount that we need, is what we need to figure out, right? Is it in there?
But regardless, we will, yeah, it is about $50,000, is what the schedule says. It'll come.
And then the utility notification, that's met, see appendix J of the special permit, that evidence has been given that the utility company that operates the electrical grid, that they'll install an interconnected customer-owned generator. Alright, so other conditions are minimize visual impacts through proper lighting, landscaping, screening, so that's met with the screening. Minimize environmental impacts by avoiding land clearing, fragmentation of open space, preserving natural habitat, limiting the use of or providing for containment of hazardous materials, by satisfying applicable noise standards, that's been met. Minimize safety impacts, that's been met. Ensure compliance with all applicable local, state, and federal regulations, codes, bylaws, rules, and standards. She says partially met, but doesn't explain why.
I think you should provide just much more detailed statement in the recommended conditions.
Yeah.
That explicitly says we will meet with all of those, and we maybe forgot to include a paragraph that states...
Maybe that's that you need to just include it. And then, so that was...
We do have that on page eight, it says ensure compliance with all applicable local, state, federal statutes, regulations, codes, bylaws, rules, and standards, and it says this solar project will comply with all applicable local, state, federal requirements, including Massachusetts Wetland Protection Act and its regulations. And one of the conditions that was set is that the applicant must adhere to the permit as provided, meaning this is in there.
Yeah, and would put that, would put that in any condition. Alright, and then the special permit, one, two, three, four things we look at, the use is in harmony with the purpose and intent of the section, 3800, that's met, the use will be cited, designed, and operated in a manner that appropriately addresses the impacts to the neighborhood and the community, including visual impacts, environmental impacts, and impacts to public health, safety, and welfare, that's met. No nuisance is expected to be created by the use, that's met. And adequate and appropriate facilities will be provided for the proper operation of the solar installation, partially met, again, that's the road I think we're talking about. Setback requirements because of the putting the two lots together, now it doesn't have to have setback issue, so that's now met, dimensional requirements. Lighting, no lighting problems, signage, no signage problems, utility connections, that's already taken care of. Roads, so that's the partially met one, that we just, that might be a condition. So that's all about the road. Control of vegetation, vegetation is met, hazardous materials is met, there's no hazardous materials. Noise, that's been met, there's no noise, has a sound rating of 60 decibels. Or landscaping and screening has been met. Safety standards, emergency standards, emergency services, that's met. The applicant will work with local emergency services in developing emergency response plan and providing the fire, fire chief, highway superintendent, and emergency management director with any required information. So that's in the, it's in there. Access, the solar array will be fenced with seven, seven-foot-high security fence, or six?
It's a, all told, it will be the top of it will be at seven feet, it's typically six and a half feet, and it's raised off the ground six inches.
And then also land clearing, soil erosion, and habitat impacts, that's met, determine that, again, this is better for wildlife than what's there now. So then the monitoring, maintenance, and reporting, so these are partially met, and that gets back to the maintenance and operations and maintenance plan. And then the annual reporting, that we would like the planning board to get, actually during construction, we get, I forget, monthly, or we get more plans, whatever you're sending to the wetlands, whatever, the CONCOM.
Yes.
And the CONCOM, they wanted certain things, right?
The CONCOM, we're completely outside of any jurisdiction of the CONCOM, sorry.
Oh, right.
They don't have, they haven't started...
Because for the thing up in the quarry, I was getting like weekly, or bi-weekly, remember those reports, because that was a CONCOM thing, but... So we should just get some reports on, as the progress is going.
It's, so you proposed terms in the schedule, or maybe a meeting, but...
Alright, and then decommissioning. Traffic flow is fine, adequacy of utilities and public service, that, neighborhood character and social structures, seems okay, impact on the natural, so now this gets into more same stuff, fiscal impact, fine. I don't know now, we get, it's such a repeat itself, because it's site plan review and special permit, some of them are the same. Fees, there was still maybe... Fees, there was still maybe a question about fees. Did you talk to anybody about that?
I didn't, but once again, I kind of called back on Pat, she spelled out the fee structure, and it's acceptable. I think if, you know, we pay a link or three hundred fifty in total for everything, and he'll remember exactly how, but it's somewhere around another $3,000, maybe $5,000, something like that, she spells it out.
Because we max, we, we have the thing by first thousand square feet, but then it maxes out at $3,000, so that's what this would do.
With the additional $200, it makes a total of $3,200.
And we're saying by, by this reviewer's calculation, the total amount of fees due for this project is $6,600.
Did that add in the peer review stuff or not?
Peer review stuff we've already.
No, that was different.
Okay.
Although we're not seeing the whole of this area yet, so.
You know what it is, it's a special permit fee and then the site plan review fee. So we have, is it $3,000 for each of them?
Well, it can't be.
So these remaining balance of $6,250. All right, well, that would be a condition, is just to make sure, we got to, we got to straighten this out. Do you know why it comes out to $6,000?
That was one of the areas that we, we've been, we're interested actually from the town on, does it go out like that?
Is that from Pat?
Yeah. So I don't know if she's saying that in our bylaws, maybe we do say that a special permit is $3,000 and site plan review is $3,000, but if we're doing them together, that doesn't necessarily make sense.
And I think that the $3,000 amount is the disturbed land fee.
Right.
Not the actual permit fee, so.
Right, the permit fee is just the.
The $200.
The $250 plus, yeah. All right, so I'll check on that, if that, that seems.
Do, all right.
Yeah. But if in fact, if that's what our bylaws say, we got to, we might have to make some revision to that.
Yeah, and we have the right to adjust that if we.
Yeah.
Yeah, we should.
What was at the end of that page, stormwater, okay. All right, so then it starts repeating itself. All right, and then she did prepare a.
Motion?
Yeah, a motion and then, and then.
Is it one or two?
Proposed conditions. Site plan review, special permit, stormwater permit all in one.
Okay.
Because they're all, they, yeah, they end up being the same things, you know?
Yeah, all right.
All right, so do you have any other questions, or?
The only other comment I have is that we're in the late stages of negotiating the pilot agreement, and most of the terms are just waiting on some final details initially to get back from our source, unless the exact money or program is going to be, and so we're hearing the pilot agreement as well, part of the assessors on that.
It's with the board of assessors or select board?
Initially, to get the terms, it's with the board of assessors and then the select board will improve.
To finalize it, yeah. All right, I'd like to, unless planning board members have anything at this point, I'll open it up to the public. Does anybody have anything? We've had several meetings on this, and I think we've addressed a lot of the issues that have been raised, but if anybody has anything else at this point, this would be the time to just talk. If you could just say your name, thanks.
David, decision 33 Set Right Road.
What's that?
Mr. Wade.
Sorry.
David, decision 33 Set Right Road. Chairman Wade, I, I wasn't quite sure when I should address this, but I probably should have done it ahead of time. I apologize for the inconvenience to the board, but I had brought this up before and it hasn't been acted on by the board. Prior to the first scheduled meeting regarding this special permit application in August 2018, Mr. Camosa was heard making public comments in support of granting of this special permit. His comments were so disconcerting that while I was not part of the conversation, I felt compelled to comment, that I hoped his opinion was not shared by members of the planning board, because to do so, the, the process would be useless and simply an exercise in futility. While I recognized Mr. Camosa as a select board member, I did not realize that he was a voting member of the planning board, and was appalled when I realized that he would be part of the valuation process and deliberation of this application in light of his very vocal and enthusiastic support of this project prior to any formal proceedings commenced in accordance with the town bylaws. By speaking out in favor of this project prior to the start of any formal hearing, let alone completion of the public hearing, and prior to the full review of the application, he has created a reasonable and credible perception of impropriety as a sitting member of this board, sitting and voting member of this board. His continued involvement with the board also puts him in a position to advance his publicly stated position and has the distinct possibility of tainting the process in its totality, including the ability of this board to, to remain impartial. While Mr. Camosa does not lose his ability as a private citizen simply because of his position on the planning board, once he exercises his right to speak out as a private citizen, I would suggest he forfeits his right to continue as a planning board member with any involvement in this special permit application. His impartiality is compromised, and he, his continued involvement with these proceedings could call into question any future decision made by the planning board. Mr. Camosa should immediately recuse himself and take no active role in the remainder of these proceedings. Mr. Wade is chairman, if he doesn't, if he fails to recuse himself, you should call for his recusal as a result of these events. His continued involvement is inappropriate, and query whether his substantial involvement to this point has already polluted the process to such a degree that impartiality of the remaining board members has been compromised. I have no reason to believe that this has happened, but it still raises again, if not the real, at least the perception of impropriety. Our courts have repeatedly held that when there is a credible allegation of improper participation by a member of a board, what needs to be avoided is suspicion or suggestion of actions motivated by personal or private interests. Mr. Camosa needs to recuse himself now. His continued participation in this application and the ultimate decision is inappropriate. The longer it goes on, the greater chance his influence has and stated support of this project to negatively impact each member's impartiality, ultimately could call into question any decision made by the board, and I believe it would serve as a legitimate appellate issue. So I want to know how that's going to be addressed, because this is the second time now that I've brought it up and the board still hasn't, hasn't really addressed it, and it's a real problem.
Well, thank you.
If I could address that, John?
Yeah, but I just wanted, I just wanted to say thank you, and you did bring it up before, and we did, you know, we took it under advisement as, as much as we do, just so you know, we hire, the reason why we have peer reviewers is to, is to make sure that, you know, we go, there's always some, you know, we're all people on the board, but we try to look at the facts. So we have independent reviewers, both administratively and on the engineering side of it.
But I'm not.
No, I, I hear your thing, and I'll let, I'll let Mr. Camosa, you know, you know, do what he thinks is right, but I just wanted you to know that, that we try to be impartial and, and we get third-party reviewers to, to help us also.
And I think that that's part of the, obviously it's part of the town bylaws to look at this from two perspectives. Number one is the project itself and whether it meets the requirements and the stated criteria. What I'm concerned about is the analysis under section 5320 that talks about the benefit to the neighborhood versus the benefit to the project as a whole to the community. That's where the impartiality is lost, because those criteria still have to be weighed for this project to go forward, as you all know. The stated impartiality doesn't go to the review of the project itself and the nuts and bolts and the erecting of, of any structures. It goes to the weighing and the analysis of the criteria under section 5320, and that's where the impartiality is even, is even more important and of paramount concern.
You want to say anything?
Sure. I, I can't speak to why you think that I am not being impartial. The comments that you heard, and I remember that evening, I was speaking to old friends of mine, the Lenarzics. I built a new home on Set Right Road myself in 1985, and Karen asked me, she says, can you please stop this? And the comments that you heard, which I said, I can't stop this, I have to listen to everything, go forward. If these people follow our bylaws, that's probably, you know, what will happen. It's, I was not impartial, I did not speak in favor or against it. I just was replying to Karen, saying that I can't stop this. If the applicants meet all the requirements of our bylaw, it more than likely would go forward.
That's not what I recall hearing, but again, I brought it up for the, for the record, just to preserve any, any appellate issue.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, so can you just put that in the minutes, Paul, that this issue was brought up?
Okay, I'm gonna need to get some.
There was a resident who questioned whether Kip was, is impartial or not. I think it's a good summary. Anybody else? So we have to, do you want to say something?
Yes.
Okay, I didn't, okay.
Tony Martino, 39, Set Right Road. Just on the, the blocking issues here. He just said that it's, I believe we referred to it as a dome, however, there is no dome at, at the end of Set Right Road. It looks right down. There's no picture of it here, but it looks right down. And from what I can see in the plans here, we're about 222 feet at the project site. About 240 feet is the nearest one here on Set Right Road, and it's probably another five feet, but we'll go with 240. So right off the bat, you're 18 feet above the, the project itself. Everybody follow me so far?
And the road is?
Yes.
Okay.
Just, just going by what was presented in the, in the plans. 222 feet at this point, 240 feet up on Set Right Road, or close to Set Right Road, and then it's a little higher. So at least, at least a distance of 18 feet, that you're already above it. So you're looking down onto the project before you even get going. And then you're going to put, I believe, four to six-foot plants in front of it that grow a foot to a foot and a half a year. So it's going to be a significant amount of time before these block any portion of the project. And it's just, the, the whole time we've been saying that nobody's going to see this, and it's just, it's inaccurate. Just, I'm just going by what's in the book.
Okay. I'm not sure anybody said, no one's ever going to see this, that, that I.
It's going to be blocked from view is what, during the very first meeting. So it was blocked from view, that they were going to plant trees, whatever it would take to block it.
Yeah.
And now we're at four to six-foot trees that grow a foot a year, so if you take a six-foot tree, it's going to be at least five years. I'm doing some rough math here, but you get up to about 15 feet then, but you're still 18 feet above the project, so if a tree grows to 15 feet, you're still three feet short.
Okay.
Does that make sense, or am I reading you wrong?
I'm not going to argue with your measurements, I'm just saying, I'm not sure anybody said you're not going to see, you're going to see the tops of the panels, you're going to see the trees, or you're going to, you know, something out there, yeah.
There was some question around exactly how the visual impact would be, and that was why, significantly expensive, we did go out in the building, take these photos and place the, the array so that we can actually know what the visual impact is, and they'll probably say you won't ever see it, but I do believe that the impact will be very, very minimal, and then once those trees do come to trade, you won't be seeing it, so.
You'll see the trees.
Yeah.
So you see something out there, yeah.
You're going to see the top of a tree, and then, and then all these panels beyond it.
Yeah.
Right?
Yeah.
Yep.
Yep.
All right.
Okay.
Thank you. So at this point, we got to, unless anybody else has anything to, to add, we got to decide whether we want to close the public hearing. Do you have something else to add, or?
No, I was just bringing it up to the existing conditions plan, which is where you can see all the, the topographical features.
Oh, hi.
Hi, James Wakus, 32 Sawmill Plain Road. Some of the concerns I have, we've brought up before and been over it, but especially under 5300, when it says neighborhood characteristics and social structures, doesn't meet that requirement at all, drastically changes the neighborhood forever, for the next 20 years. All I'm saying is that there's, there's better options, I understand what you're going to do, but would it be different if we were sitting here voting on seven or eight farms for special permits? Because I understand there's a lot of acreage out there, and what's to prevent us from covering the entire field? It's the second largest tillable piece of land in the town of Deerfield. You know, I'm concerned that it's a special permit, but I'm also concerned that it's setting the precedent moving forward, that we're going to cover, if you look at this field from the photographs, we're going to cover all of it. You know, if you issue one, how do you not issue another, or another, or another, or another? I just think that that is not in the characteristic of this community in the town that we moved into. One of our neighbors who came over who's elderly, when we looked at the drawings that you provided your company, those are your numbers, when you look at them and, you know, when you're not sitting there, when you're sitting where we are and we look at them, her exact words were, I won't live long enough for the trees to grow tall enough to change the view. We're all going to look at them when you drive down the road, when you walk down the road. I get it, solar's good, but there's better options. Put them on the dump where you're never going to use that land again. Put them on top of Pelican, do something, but this is tillable farmland that we need to have to feed our children's children in the future. I just want to go on record stating that I really think that you need to think about what you're doing by covering up good soil. But, thank you.
Thanks.
Anne Maria Strawski, 194 Conway Road. Just a couple of things to make sure that we understand. We own 50 acres out on that property. Only 10 acres are going to be used, so that means 40 acres are still in agriculture. I'd like to remind people that don't know about that property in the plains, Mr. Bowman spent $1,100,000 on three pieces of property in the plains. He's not a farmer, he doesn't live locally, he lives in New York. The property right across from the neighbors is perked with a beautiful view on a paved road. He owns 17 acres there. When and if he develops that property, their view is gone anyway. Now, the other properties that he owns in the plains, he's the largest landowner out there, by the way, all have access to, to at least two roads. Set Right Road on one, and Plain Road on the other, and Set Right Road and Sawmill Plain on the other. To me, that spells at some point development, and there goes all of that property that we're still trying to keep our acreage in farmland. And the other thing that I would bring up, we, we love the trees and everything, but I also realize, they want trees tall enough to block it. It's a solar array. It depends on sun. Trees are beautiful. They provide habitat, natural resources, but they also provide shade. You can't shade a solar array and make it worthwhile.
Thank you. Comment?
I'm just going to say, I appreciate you having to say, we're not avoiding speculation, and that's going to be, or asking you to look at a snapshot of time.
I think he was. I think, I think you were speculating about panels going over the whole area, and that's what, that's what you were speculating about, so.
I did, I did.
It's okay, just so you see that.
It's too big street.
Mm-hmm. Is there any other new information from anybody?
It's a lot harder to situate these things in terms of electrical grade, and maybe would you realize, it's not like you can just go out and set a panel or anywhere, it's a pretty significant process, so there's been a lot of, a lot of, a whole plan for these things around, would be quite challenging. Did it happen one or other?
I'm, 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 I'm just saying, from this perspective.
All right. So seeing no new information, I'd like to close the public hearing for the proposed solar. for the proposed solar installation at Set Right Road. So, at this point, the Deerfield Planning Board has heard a lot, has had our two technical review people help us with this, and it's, we'll deliberate and then make a decision. So, any questions, comments, motions from the Planning Board members?
Well, I would just like to say that, you know, I've watched the Ostrowskis for many years, and I've often asked myself why Chet hasn't just sold his property off? Like, a lot of people that have inherited property, and he hasn't. He's always maintained and kept his land. And to me, solar is probably the best way to preserve farmland, because this will be locked up for 20-plus years, 20 to 30 years, with panels. And if that land is ever needed for food production, it's very easily recovered. Whereas, once it's developed with homes or buildings, that's not the case. If solar gives a family an option to hold on to their property, help pay the taxes, et cetera, et cetera, I don't see an issue with that. That's what I got to say.
Thanks.
As far as, you know, we have to clear up the issue with the permit fees and stuff like that. But as far as the road goes, I spoke with Kevin before, but I spoke with him again today. And he said that, you know, the road in that area, they have no problem with. If the applicants put more gravel over, if they wanted to widen it a little bit, he didn't have a problem with it. And that he currently doesn't go and plow that section, but it was only a little bit more... He's not saying that he would do it, but, you know, he can plow up to that and just not plow it to block the road. Then the applicant can continue it on from there.
So, that's my understanding, is that the only major thing is that if... The town would only take care of it if it was in good shape. Right. And they would have to put it in good shape. If it's not in good shape, town doesn't plow it, you deal with it.
Excuse me, once the array's up and running, is there any reason to even access it?
Except for ones that are typically on...
We're actually not... We'll close the public hearing. So...
Well, no, but I specifically asked him to...
But that's something we can put in a condition or something.
Right.
But we really can't have more give and take.
Okay.
That's my understanding.
The question I have about the town road is, what are like the town specs on it? It's a town road, but it's not maintained in the winter.
Right.
So, when someone does want to put a development in, what do they need to do typically? And this is some form of development, whether it's a house or solar array, whatever. Do they bring it up to the standard that it's budding to? Or do we just gravel it? You know, what's past history on that? I just don't wanna see all of us get stuck with something. If somebody develops further down, all of a sudden, that road needs to be brought up to a certain grade. Do we pay for it? Does the developer pay for it? Saying, "Well, I'm taking care of a piece of property that's not in front of my..." The road that's not in front of my land. I think there should be some rules or something, or concrete. So, there's no gray area, should be more...
I...
And I'm sure the town has faced this, and this isn't the only spot.
Not that I was involved, but, you know, my knowledge of past things like that, the town has never really improved the roads in any, for anyone. The applicants have always...
Well, I know somebody that did some development on Plain Road, and they needed to bring it up to code. I believe, before they issued building permits, they had to put pavement in, didn't they?
That's true.
Well, 30 years ago, what happened with San Gully, that's paved now. But this is totally different.
Well, I know it is not like a house job, but it's the same thing. It's some form of development, whether it's a house or whatever. And I'm not speaking against or for it, but I'm just saying, we should, the town should address this, because it's gonna keep going on and on. We have a lot of roads that aren't maintained in the wintertime, but they're town roads. So, I think the town needs to come up with some definition, what they wanna see, sort of a gray area. In this way, there won't be any gray areas, they'll be more concrete.
I think in the past and present, the two big things that the town's been concerned with is access for emergency vehicles and stuff like that. And since there's nobody living in those areas, I think that it would be no different than a barn. I mean, say if this solar array should start on fire in the middle of the winter, and the road down to it's not plowed, it wouldn't be any different than a tobacco barn out in the field.
Well, there is a barn out there, and probably was many barns out there, but I don't remember them.
Yeah, exactly.
But I'm sure there probably was.
Yeah.
But I'm just saying, it's being, it's not agriculture anymore, it's going to a different use. That's all I'm just saying. I know that you can hear grumbling when someone has to go back onto someone else's frontage and say, "Okay, I gotta improve that road." I'm just saying that maybe it should be done now. I'm not...
Well, I think, yeah.
Or the town should drop some specs or something. Right now, it's pretty, yeah, okay, throw a little gravel down, maybe we'll plow it, maybe we won't. So, I'm just saying it should be more concrete. And I'm not just saying for your project, every project.
So, is that, I mean, we had said we wanted, one of the conditions is gonna be, "Here from the highways, superintendent." So, is that...
That you could cover it.
Condition that, I mean, I think all we've been saying up to now is that it's in a condition that they'll, that they're satisfactory, good enough condition that they'll plow.
They'll work with the highway superintendent to bring the road up to a position that they're satisfied with.
Yeah. You wanna go further than that, Roger, or is that...
Well, I still think it's sort of a gray area, but I'm just saying, maybe that's food for thought for whoever makes those decisions.
Well, I think what I heard was that the superintendent would just not pile snow, and then they take it from there, which...
Correct.
That would, that was sort of a concern of mine to begin with, was, well, how much, you know, are we gonna be plowing an extra 5,000 feet, whatever, at our expense? And if that's not the case, I'm okay with that. I mean, it's no big deal for him to just not push the snow.
Exactly, he made no obligation to plow the road.
Right.
Yeah, but is there an obligation, though, now, that there's something out there, some type of structure that they need to get to?
No. Because, I mean, I believe the Ostrowskis always have access summer or winter, but the town doesn't maintain that section road, so it's up to them to plow to get to their land.
Yeah.
You know, they can't call the highway department and say, "Hey, I can't get to my barn." It's been up to them. It would be the same.
So, I... Do you wanna say anything?
You talking to me?
Yeah.
No, I'm fine.
All right. So, I just say that this has been, you know, thanks for the application and getting back and forth and working with our engineers. I appreciate all the town residents, all the comments, and, you know, I think we understand what we're faced with. The town, at an annual meeting, passed bylaws for extra-large scale, large-scale and smaller solar arrays, because there's more and more of them. We didn't have this option, you know, 20 years ago. So, things are changing. What we're gonna be looking at is changing. That's the nature of life. So, I think part of our job as a planning board in town is that, you know, the town has said solar's okay, solar's good, but we wanna put some restrictions on it. We wanna minimize impacts. That doesn't mean no impact. That means minimize impact. And, you know, the view, I think everybody, to me, some people like to look at solar panels, some people don't. So, that's a tough shot for me. I got one right outside my window. I look at it every day. A lot of people do. We have a six-megawatt one, you know, that I can throw with a stone and reach it. And it's, you know, it's great in power. So, that's one thing, and we're gonna see more of them. But we should keep in mind that it, you know, on every single field taken by it. And that's something that we can control, because we have a site plan. So, if we do see that these are starting to pop up too much, and it really starts to affect the characteristics of Deerfield, then that's something we consider. So, I think it's not necessarily that you get one, it means you're gonna have two, three, four, 100. But again, we do have private land ownership in this country, in this town, and I respect that. And, you know, hearing from the owners, from the owners of the land, the last meeting was very powerful to me. And I think people should be allowed to do certain things with their property. You know, views get changed all the time that we have no control over. I know that happens everywhere in town. So, while I understand and can sympathize with the neighbors, I'm not sure that's enough to prevent moving forward on proposals that come before us. So, at this point, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the application in front of us for solar array on Set Right Road, as in the application for both the, for all three, the site plan review, the special permit, and the stormwater permit. Very appreciative that the grasses underneath this are gonna be actually beneficial to wildlife and pollinators. And so, I wanna, we have a list of conditions that we wanna put on this, but I make the motion that we approve it.
I'll second it.
Do we have any other discussion?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Oppose?
I'm abstaining.
Okay, so, for...
I'm abstaining, John.
Why is that?
Because I'm abstaining. I don't think I need to state a reason.
I believe Pat told us that if there's anybody that votes against or abstains, we need to notice who it was, and that's about it.
All right.
So, just put down that Roger's abstaining.
For...
No, John, I am abstaining, but there's a reason. I missed the first meeting. This is a special permit, and I did not review the tape.
You missed one out of four?
One out of four. And I... You're allowed to miss one, but you need to review the tape from that particular meeting. Because you have three votes...
Did you read the...
I am going to abstain.
Did you read the Mullins Rule?
This is the way Pat Smith explained it to us the last time that we were... And when it comes to special permit, you can miss one meeting.
Right.
However, you have to review the tape. I am fully up on this project. However, I didn't submit the documentation into the town hall. So, I just think that it's safer that I abstain.
So, I'm looking on... So, this is, this was sent to us about attendance by municipal boards, committees, commissions. The members of the board who vote on the plan must have attended the hearings of the plan. The Mullins case involved at most two hearings on a proposed subdivision. At least two Massachusetts trial court judges have refused to apply the Mullins Rule in an order... So, judges have ruled that in essence, that if a planning board member misses a meeting when non-substantive issues were discussed, it makes little difference. Furthermore, if a planning board misses a meeting where there may have been substantive discussion and presentation, but that material was undoubtedly reiterated at a later meeting which the planning board member did attend, the Mullins Rule should not apply. So, I think the question is, is if you're up on everything.
Well, I believe I am.
I believe I'd be...
But you have your three votes.
I believe every...
I think it's safer if I abstain.
Well, the question is, do we need three or four votes? It's, the board is seven, and so to have a majority, the board is four.
But we have a majority tonight.
Committee or commission, when holding a adjutary hearing, shall not be disqualified from voting in a manner solely due to the member's absence from no more than a single session of the hearing in which testimony or other evidence is received. Before such vote, the member shall certify in writing that he has examined all evidence received on the missed sessions. Again, I've been at all these hearings, and it's, I don't think there's new, there's that much new that anybody's missed. And then there's also the written certification. Did one of you do that written certification?
Rod, Max.
He did, that was on the last...
On the railroad yard one.
So, you could do that, too. It's just to sign something that says you're up on it.
Well, that one is...
Yeah, but if you reviewed...
Has been voted on, it's done. They have to resubmit, so that one...
But if you reviewed it, you can still fill the paperwork out to assert that you did it.
Yeah.
I don't think that... I don't think the fact that you haven't done it at this point is a... You know, if you feel uncomfortable submitting that paperwork, that's a problem. If you don't...
No, no, I don't feel uncomfortable. I believe I know all information that...
Then you've met that, and I think you just filled out the paperwork to say that you're officially saying that you did.
So, I think that'd be the way to go, because it hasn't... It's not like you've missed substantive arguments here.
Okay, as long as everybody feels that way, okay, then if I'm a yes vote.
Yeah. And then as far as Roger goes, I don't think he has to explain it. It's just that he has to say who he is, who it is, and did it, that's all.
All right, so it's four, zero, one, Roger abstaining.
Right.
So, I would like to actually finish the conditions that go along with the motion. Should've done this, actually. So, let's do a vote again. So, some of the conditions that we've talked about. So, during construction, all local, state, federal laws will be followed, and there'll be no construction on the proposed ways, structures, services on Sunday or federal legal holidays. We're gonna revote. I'm gonna read the conditions that we put on the approval. The approval has some conditions on it, and then we'll revote. I went too fast there.
So, then should that last vote be rescinded?
Right, so...
I make a motion that we rescind the last vote until the conditions are included.
Friendly motion on my motion, so, accept it.
Okay.
All right, so now I'll... So, now I make a motion to approve this with the following, to approve the site plan, special permit, and stormwater permit for the Set Right Road solar installation project with the following conditions. So, all state, local, federal laws are observed regarding noise, vibration, dust, blocking of town roads, and that no construction be done on proposed ways, structures, and services on any Sunday and legal federal holidays. Violation of any condition contained herein or failure to comply with the site plan shall subject the applicant to a zoning enforcement action in accordance with GL 40A. Applicant will construct, operate, and maintain a solar renewable energy project, which will produce up to 2 megawatts AC in compliance with the plans entitled, and the ones that we looked at tonight, which are dated November 8th, right? Make sure we get that right date.
These are November 8th, 2018.
Yep.
By KM.
That was the last revision.
So, those are the plans that were approved. All material modifications of this solar electric installation made after issuance of the required building permit shall require approval by the planning board. No permit shall be issued to applicant until all outstanding fees are paid to the town of Deerfield, and we'll figure that out this week. It should be an easy one. A copy of the final commissioning report shall be submitted to the Deerfield Board of Selectmen no less than 30 days prior to the activation of the facility. A pilot agreement between the project developers and the Deerfield Board of Selectmen shall be approved prior to the commencement of the operation of the array. Applicants shall provide a copy of the project summary, electrical schematic, and site plan to the fire chief, highway superintendent, emergency management director, and identify a responsible owner-operator for public inquiries throughout the life of the installation prior to the commencement of the operation of the solar array. Signage shall be attached to the gate, providing the emergency contact and information and responsible person. That's important. The fire department shall be provided with a means to open the gate on the access road to the security fencing around the array, and shall have access to emergency shut-offs for the solar array. Project developers and site contractors shall provide a training session for the fire department and other town officials on how to use the emergency cutoff switches and other operational details. Applicants shall submit an annual report demonstrating and certifying compliance with the operations and maintenance plan, the requirements of Section 3800, and the approved site plan, which report shall be submitted to the select board, planning board, fire chief, emergency management director, building commissioner, board of health, and conservation commission no less than 45 days after the end of the calendar year. A formal written decommissioning plan shall be prepared, including a provision to allow the town to remove such installations at the owner's expense in accordance with the requirements of Section 3890, if it has not been removed within 150 days of discontinued operations or abandonment. Only 150 days. That's 20 years from now. Within 60 days of completion of construction on the project, applicant... Within sixty days of completion of construction on the project, applicants shall submit as-built drawings to the Deerfield Building Commissioner. And then pursuant to Section 11 of the stormwater regulations for the town of Deerfield, applicants shall certify that the project is in accordance with plan specifications, and so shall provide inspections to adequately document compliance upon its receipt and approval of the final inspection and reports, and/or upon otherwise determining that all work was completed in conformance with the regulations, planning board, stormwater authority, we will issue a letter certifying completion. Anything else to add to the conditions? So we, those are the things we talked about, was the operation and maintenance, and fees, and the highway, getting the highway superintendent's approval on the road. So that's the motion now before us. Questions, comments?
Nope.
Uh, John, you second again?
Has it been...
That was my, that was my motion.
That was your motion?
That was a long one. Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose abstain? Four, zero, one. So we will get this printed out. We'll talk to the highway superintendent and the, about the fees, so hopefully we'll get that tomorrow or the next day. And then, and then we'll get that, um, we'll get this written up and sign them for you. Yes, sir?
What is the written determination on the issue of the board's required by the bylaws? Do you have the obligation to provide a written determination regarding the consideration that the benefit outweighs the burden to the neighborhood and addressing the criteria? So when is that usually issued?
Well, this, actually what we're gonna use is this, the thing that I read earlier in this evening was the Deerfield Planning Board Site Plan Review slash Special Permit slash Stormwater Permit Report. And that report goes through all of these items, and it says met or partially met, and so most of them were met, a few partially met, we're gonna...
No, 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 I think that was the criteria for the project itself. This is the criteria for granting the special permit. The consideration of the six or seven different criteria that you have to make a written determination that the benefit of the project, uh, I'll just, it says a written determination that the benefits of the proposed use outweigh the detrimental impacts to the town and the neighborhood in view of the particular characteristics of the site and of the proposal in relation to the site. In addition to any criteria set forth in the specific provisions of the bylaw, determinations shall include each of the following, Sections 5321 through 5326.
Right, so that, in addition, uh, 5320 is what, most of them are grouped under, 5320. So here in, um, a special permit may be granted upon written determination by the special permit granting authority that the benefits of the proposed use outweigh its detrimental impacts on the town and the neighborhood in view of the particular characteristics of the site and the proposal in relation to that site. In addition to the criteria specified in 5320 or elsewhere in the zoning bylaws, such determinations shall include consideration of the following. So we say the use is in harmony with the purpose and intent of this Section 3800. The use will be sighted, designed, and operated in a manner that appropriately addresses the impacts of the neighborhood and the community, including visual impacts, environmental impacts, and impacts to public health, safety, and welfare. That's met. No nuisance is expected to be created by the use, and that's met. And then the adequate and appropriate facilities will be provided for proper operations of the solar electric installation. So the only thing there is the road that we're gonna follow.
I understand how you haven't addressed the social, economic, and community needs which are served by the proposal, the traffic flow, you've addressed the traffic flow, safety, and parking. I think you've addressed whether or not applicable, but primarily the social, economic, or community needs which are served by the proposal, the neighborhood characteristic and social structures, and the fiscal impact of whether or not it's adequate. We had discussions about that, but we, I don't know that we've got a determination from the board that those have been considered to the degree necessary to support the findings of the deviation granting a special permit. I mean, that's, I'm just curious, it says written documentation.
Right, so that's what I've got here, and I can email it actually to you. So 5321, social, economic, and community needs which are served by the proposal, we feel it was met. Applicants have submitted materials demonstrating the following benefits. So we get clean and local energy, get some revenue, you get some revenue to the town, income to landowner, improved groundwater, agricultural benefit, potential increase in agricultural yield based on increased presence of bees and other pollinators, fostered by pollinator-friendly planter mix planted around the array. No decrease in property value. We believe home values of the surrounding residents are not expected to suffer or fall based on the independent report found in Appendix X2, conducted using a match peer analysis of the impact of solar farms on neighboring rural slash agricultural properties. Then we got 5322, traffic flow, safety. 5323, adequacy of utilities and other public services. 5324, neighborhood character and social structures. The project will support local electricity needs, providing a renewable source of energy to the community. In addition, in addition, the project will benefit and support the community's rural and agricultural nature. A local pollinator mix will be planted around and underneath the panels to foster bees and other pollinator insects, potentially benefiting the agricultural production of more than four hundred acres of agricultural land within a mile of the project.
John, thank you. I don't want you to have to go.
So it goes on and on, and I gotta email this to you. Impacts on the natural environment, again, that that's met. Potential fiscal impact, including impact on town services, tax base, and employment, that's, that we feel like that's all met, and the pilot payment of lower taxes is quoted there again. So, so it is written, and we can get that out tomorrow.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you to the applicants and to the community residents. We appreciate it. So the other thing on our, I'd like to have on the agenda is what our next steps are, because it's, I got some emails today about last week's meeting, and, um...
Okay, I can tell you what we...
Was it, was, did the applicants withdrew both, the site plan and this?
They, they, I believe they withdrew.
They withdrew everything, and they're starting from...
I don't believe they...
Well, we, we were just...
Withrew the site plan. They withdrew, they...
They withdrew asking for a variance, because, yes.
Alright. So that gets back to the fact that we can't really do anything until they have a variance, because right now it's not allowed there.
Right.
So maybe they didn't withdraw this site plan review, but it's not active, I guess is what we could say. I gotta find out the right wording for that. There's nothing we can do about it.
It's in limbo until they come back with something else.
Because I just want to make sure, because the thing with Priscilla today was, is the ninety-day thing still in effect? It can't be if we're not...
If it's an illegal operation.
John, we were at that meeting.
Yes.
And they withdrew the request for a special minute. Right, because they, they pre, let's call it a pre-vote, they, you know, how is everybody gonna vote? And they didn't have the majority, the super majority.
No, they had, no, they had a majority, but not a super majority, right.
They needed a super majority.
Yeah.
And if they continued, and if they got a negative determination, they couldn't come back for two years.
Couldn't come back, yeah.
So they withdrew, and now they might be coming back with something else, which if they do...
I guess my question was, they didn't withdraw because the planning board was there also.
No, the planning board...
We had a meeting that night, so they didn't withdraw their request for the site plan review.
We discussed and made a recommendation, and quite frankly, the zoning board of appeals did the right thing. They stood to the bylaws, and, you know...
Well, that's your opinion, so...
Well, we, we closed, we, we voted, and we closed...
It was in direct conflict with, so, you know, we should, and I brought this up several times in the last two years, that we need, in my opinion, revisit the solar. I mean, were the two, two biggies, the hundred-foot setback, could that be, could that be a positive? Is it, is it, is it keeping solar arrays in areas where it might not be the best place? You know, that's arguable. Maybe it is, maybe it isn't. As far as the large scale solar...
I was, I was kinda...
Rather than being a variance, maybe it should be a special permit.
Well, I think a couple of things. The first thing is, I like the fact that, you know, the way a ZBA is set up, and that when the ZBA, you know, one opinion is that, well, they did, they stuck to the bylaws, but their whole job is one rule doesn't fit all. And when you had the support of the neighbors thinking this is the best of the things, and that you look at the other butters, you know, where they wanted to be closer was the railroad yard and all that, and the type of land that it was being put on, I think that you should have greater variance or leeway with your decision, not just, well, this is the bylaws, we have to stick to it.
Well, yeah, but that's the first, that's the first criteria for, for the, um, for the variance, is it, is it in direct conflict with the bylaw? And the answer is yes to that. So that's why, when it comes to the solar stuff, we need, we need to revisit it, and, you know, it, maybe it should be special permit versus a, versus a no.
Another thing, way that we could look at too, and I don't know if you guys remember, but at the tail end of the large solar field up by John's, they were going for the maximum. It was a six megawatt. Well, because of technology, they said, well, we can make this almost seven, but, you know, we didn't really get into it too much, because we said no, and the state said, well, the biggest you can have is six. So they reduced the number of panels.
Right.
And I think that is a better, something that we should look at, not necessarily how much power it produces, but how much area takes up.
Right.
Well, it's both, it is both.
We've talked about it before, yeah.
But if, if, if we, if someone was to come in and they were gonna put up ten acres, it shouldn't be a concern of ours if it's five megawatts or a hundred megawatts.
Right.
Because of technology changing.
I see, I, I see what you're saying, Kip. You're right, it should be not on the power, it should be the area it takes up.
What are people gonna see?
Technology could change.
Right, exactly.
We, we actually, just for the record, we, we, we voted to recommend, um, from this planning board's point of view, the project.
Right, my, my, my vote exactly was...
And so, so we've done, we closed the meeting, and we, we were done at, at the end of that, that evening, as far as we're concerned.
So that was me talking as a planning board member, not a ZBA member.
Right.
You know, we should defer to the neighbors, because this is something that's gonna tie that property up for twenty, twenty-plus years. You know, it's arguable what panels and, and, uh, windmills, I mean, when I see this stuff, I see the majesty of what human intuition has done. And, you know, other people, not so much, sometimes. But that railroad site, once those panels are up, the site will be clean, new plantings, it, 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 it's never, it's not gonna...
And it'll never be agricultural.
It won't have looked that good for the last hundred years.
Yeah.
And, and, and... The residents weren't really concerned with the appearance. It was more of...
It's the noise.
Noise.
Well, it started off with appearance.
I thought they were gonna try to prove that, the residents. I was a little shocked that it went the way it did.
Well, they, they...
No, they, they came back and said that they didn't have any more objections.
Right.
That somebody had satisfied them.
Right.
As that these were, there were no more problems in their opinion.
So what are they gonna come back with? What are they gonna come back to the ZBA?
We'll find that out. They're probably gonna come back to us first.
I think I...
Well, I don't know why.
I think they're gonna have a revised plan.
Oh, okay.
I can't...
So if they come in with a revised plan to skip the zoning board, they're gonna have to meet the setbacks.
Right, and if they do that, that'll upset me a bit.
They have to go to the ZBA. It's not allowed there, period.
Oh, that's not true.
Oh, is it?
Yeah, they're looking for two variances.
Well, setbacks and for the size.
But if they shrink the size of the system...
They're gonna shrink the size of the system.
Oh, if it was as small as allowed there.
If it was two megawatts, like this one here, then it's allowed.
Alright, alright.
Is that industrial land?
No.
No, it's commercial.
Yeah.
C2, I think.
If it was industrial, then they wouldn't have needed that variance.
However, if they do that, I would be highly disappointed, because all along they were saying we couldn't...
I know, they kept saying...
That will sour me.
Well, but, you know, it's...
So extra large is a no, whereas the other one is a special permit.
But answer me this, what, what happens if ten years from now, the, the panels that are on an existing site could be replaced and double the output of the thing? Do they come back to us to just change a panel?
Well, yes, they would have to, because...
I don't see why.
I don't know why. I wonder.
Because a special permit, like, for instance, this one we just talked about, it's, it's for, uh, two megawatts AC.
Right, that's the only reason they'd have to come back, because we're restricted because of the power.
Right.
And that's what...
I like the little loophole that they got with the AC versus the DC.
I know, we gave them, we got a break on...
You have to, you have to, because you don't specify.
You know, getting back to what you said, John, where they said it wasn't affordable for them, but yet these people did it, two megawatts, and it's affordable for them.
But, well, because of the infrastructure, and I, and I get that, they, the infrastructure upgrades that they have to do. I mean, like, for, for these people here, the Hexagon, that's, that's a huge investment to carry all that three-phase under... So, you know, it's, it's not just put your panels up and full throttle.
Well, there're gonna be three-phase out there, isn't there, John, or it stops?
Well, I think on once, once it goes out to 116, but that, that's a huge upgrade. And I think if the railroad is even...
No, 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 I'm talking about the railroad.
I think it's...
The railroad's gonna have three-phase.
You would think so, right? But I'm not quite sure...
But they might, it might go down McCullen Farm Road, so it doesn't come up in, you know, River Road.
I think that they probably have to go all the way to Tru Court, to Route 5, to get them...
Well, I would, I would think, like Kip just said, I'm sure there's three-phas up to McCullen Farm. It's split someplace, because I'm sure they, the railroad has three-phas.
Well, the other thing that you kind of wonder in the back of your mind is, their landlord is the state of Massachusetts.
Well, no, not where the panels are going.
You got Pan Am?
That's Pan Am.
Pan Am's. But with the deal with them, I would not be surprised at some point to see the state commit and do that.
On some of their property?
Like they're doing, well, they'll, they'll take over that as well and do that.
Well, they'd have to buy it from Pan Am.
They are even...
Yeah, all I know is we're subsidizing, but...
Okay, you know, we're, we're kinda going far straight from what John started at. Do, do we wanna say that we've closed the meeting, and that we did everything we're gonna do, and we're out of it?
So here's, I just wanted...
Wait a minute, John, you had a question about ninety days, and we just need to say, do we believe that we've covered that base? And can we say to Priscilla, we, we closed our meeting, we decided that we would, we would agree to what they want to do, and it goes to the zoning board?
We are done with those plans that were submitted and voted on by the ZBA.
We completed our actions on them.
Our, our actions complete on that.
Okay, that's all they needed.
And we should take a vote on them.
We should vote on that.
Vote on what?
Didn't you vote on it that night?
We voted on it that night.
Well, we made a recommendation, but we never, we never voted.
What we need to do that, beyond that?
If we don't, if, if...
I don't think we have to take any action, do we?
I don't think we do either.
Because the public hearing was closed. We can't vote on it, because...
Well, we took the actions and said, we, we, as the planning board, say it's okay. They went after it, came over here, because they wanted us to vote first.
It had to come back to us.
Right, but...
You think it does?
Yes, but, because we didn't say it's okay. We recommended it.
We recommended it, right.
Yes, we didn't approve anything.
No, not at all.
But because they did...
And we closed, the, the planning board public hearing was closed?
Yes.
The planning board was closed.
Public hearing was closed.
But then you, it might have to make a decision.
I don't think we closed. I think it's still open.
We did make a decision.
No, 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 the, the, the planning board public hearing is closed, because I, I told Rachel, I said, Rachel, you need to close it.
So you closed it the night of that meeting?
Yes.
I wasn't there, so I would know that, John.
That, that is absolutely closed, the public hearing.
But then you, when you closed, you're supposed to make a decision.
We voted, we discussed it.
No, we made a recommendation. We couldn't make a decision until ZBA gave it a variance.
So now you're waiting for them?
Well, the, the applicant withdrew everything.
And then the applicant withdrew.
So, so by default, it just, it disappears.
Oh, I see.
Because they withdrew...
Because we're waiting for the ZBA, and the ZBA's not gonna make a decision, so...
But to all your points, I think that we could not approve it because it didn't meet that. And since the ZVA, uh, or the applicants withdrew that, I think that we should take a vote to, uh, not approve, because otherwise, it's out there.
I know. Then what happens to their-
Okay, no, okay, that makes sense.
What happens to them?
I'd like to make a motion-
On the two-year, wait, 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 just a minute. What happens to them if we reject them now? I mean, what have we done to them? The same thing that would've happened if they voted by the zoning boards, would've voted?
No, because it's different. They could come back tomorrow and apply again with a different plan. Or the same plan with alterations.
That, that plan that they brought in is, is, is dead right now. That specific date this plan-
I maintain, why do we need to vote on anything else beyond that? I don't understand.
Because if the, the board, the planning board did not make a decision on it, so, you know, through what Priscilla was saying, the ninety days passed, it's automatically approved, I don't think that they can go forward with it because it doesn't meet the zoning bylaws, and they did not get, uh, relief from the ZVA.
Right.
But I think to end our part of it, that if we take a, a vote to not approve it because it didn't meet our bylaws, the setback requirements, that would be the adequate way. Otherwise, if we don't vote on it, then we just didn't do anything.
It's just out there.
It's just out there. I don't know.
So, I, I guess, um-
And I, one of the things that I've, now, I've been to a couple of planning seminars, and also talking with town council about different things with the select board, that, you know, we all can talk about something, and we all can agree on it, but until we vote on it, it's not a done deal.
Oh, no, you're absolutely right. It, it needs that little vote.
So, let's- Can they make it smaller?
Well, no, so, let's vote on that.
Well, I would make a, a very simple motion that, um, the, uh, that we deny the site plan for, uh-
No, sorry, I got both of them open.
The site plan, um, for the, uh, property owners, um, on-
It's, it's a railroad yard, a hundred, a railroad yard.
From Pan Am Southern.
So, we say because of zoning board actions, we have to deny?
Because it does not meet our-
Bylaws.
Bylaws. Therefore, we reject the plan.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, wait, so let me just, let's write that down, John.
And now, when they come in with something else, it starts, the clock starts again, it's a new deal.
To reject.
You don't say reject.
Okay, what do you say?
Deny.
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 Thank you.
Deny, um, site plan. For, um, bylaw, bylaw, um, or per bylaw conditions.
Because it doesn't meet our, our town law.
Submission.
They call it, this is what they call it officially, the Mass RE-12. Deerfield Solar Project.
Okay, now you're changing some more of it. We, can we get this and then put that in there?
That's just the name of it.
That's the name of this project.
I know, I know.
I thought you wanted to write the name of the project.
Well, the site plan submission of, okay, I see what you're saying.
Mass RE-12.
Mass RE-12.
Deerfield Solar.
And the reason?
Doesn't meet zoning.
Doesn't need zoning.
Setback requirements.
And the scale of the project is too large.
Setback requirements.
Well, no, actually, nothing to do with the setback, it has to do with it's not allowed in that, uh, zoning is not allowed, extra large scale.
I was just gonna bring that up, because Kip said there's two things, it's not allowed.
Well, they were looking for relief for setbacks as well.
But, but if it's not allowed, that's, that's bigger than the setbacks.
Just because, because it doesn't meet zoning requirements. That's period.
Right, zoning requirements.
All right, so, let me just read that back, because I'll type that up that way.
Yeah, that's good.
Um, John Bronus moves to deny the site plan submission of Mass RE-12 Deerfield Solar because it doesn't meet the zoning, Deerfield zoning.
Deerfield zoning.
Period. Okay.
Kip seconded it?
Kip seconded it?
Yes.
Okay, Kip seconded.
Any discussion? No. Almost in favor of denying?
Aye.
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 Oppose? Abstained?
Five, zero, zero.
See, and the other reason to make some of these things, and it doesn't matter whether it's solar or, or something else, a special permit versus, versus the variance, because the variance is forever. A special permit is a specific, um-
To the, to the person that's doing it, the entity that's doing it.
Right, and, and, and it's not forever. It's, you know, once you have a variance, it's forever.
So, what I wanted to point out is, for that solar, for the railroad yard, they were asking for two-point-seven megawatt of direct DC.
Yeah, so that would've meant they could-
Which is actually close to two AC.
Uh, it'd be about, what do you got, lose about ten percent, so-
They said that their two AC is about two-point-six DC. So, it's almost, they just have to drop this a little bit, and they could become-
Maybe you should let them know that.
Maybe that's what they figured out.
I think maybe they figured that out.
They might've figured that out, because they might've thought, we were talking DC, and then when this discussion came, that we didn't mention AC or DC, so they can take their pick which one they wanna use.
And they go, they'll meet the setbacks?
No, they still have, we can, but the special permit can determine the setbacks.
But they dropped that back to like two-point-five.
We can grant that for setbacks?
It comes under special permit, and the setback right now requires a hundred feet. If they want less than that, then we have to-
They don't need to go to the zoning board. We could, we could grant that.
Because, because all the site, all the special permit for solar is us. Yeah, so that does make it easier. So, they just made it a little bit smaller. Maybe they figured that out, that's interesting.
Well, I think they, I think they decided that they were gonna try to come back. They, they had nothing to lose by, by redrawing, everything to gain, if, anything to gain was by redrawing. Otherwise, they were just out of it for two years regardless.
Now, what happens if the converters technology gets a bit better and more efficient, and these people start pumping out more than?
Well, that's why I think what you said is, we gotta redo our bylaws to save size.
It should be DC, what, what the panels are putting out.
No, 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 I think we should take out all the DC AC requirements and just make it open. I mean, there's no-
Plan that's disturbed or taken up.
We're just concerned about whether the panels are too big or too small, or what the panels are doing physically.
So, greater than ten acres, or, or less than five acres, or?
Right.
Yeah.
And leave off-
No, that, yeah, that, yeah.
I'd, I'd take out the, the thing, because it's a floating number now.
I think that, that ten acres, that comes from, is that, that's not from our, because they had to keep it under ten acres. That's not from ours, is it, our bylaw? Because ours is specific with, uh, DC current and eight, or-
No, I think it's, it's ours, because they made a big issue of it on this one, because whether it's within the fence area, or the panels, blah, blah, blah.
Do we have anything else that we need to?
So, um, the other day, the Deerfield Planning Board got a application for a site, for a special permit and site plan review from, from, um, Sun Mass Inc.
Now, what's this here?
That's, I, I-
Is this a new one? Is this a new, um?
Do you have, have others, or just those?
What, Sun Mass Inc?
It's in the pot place.
Pot place, oh. I was thinking it sounds like solar to me, yeah.
There's not enough books for, there's not enough of these for everybody, but there's one of these, if, do you wanna take one home, or?
You wanna take one?
No.
All right.
Otherwise, you leave it in the box here. So, I asked, I said-
Are you shutting us up?
No.
Okay.
I said, we didn't wanna put it on tonight's agenda, but we wanted to talk about it and say, are we ready to take this on, and should we set some dates? Um, so that's, that's basically our task, is to set some dates. So, I believe this is a, uh, proposed marijuana cultivation facility at 198 Mill Village Road in Deerfield. The site is currently occupied by Pioneer Gardens, uh, which will continue to be a fixture in Deerfield as they reinvest in other locations. So, it's a, uh, it's our first one, based on the new bylaw that we've just passed a year or two ago at annual meeting.
Because, because this is just to grow, they don't need to go in front of the selectmen and, and do this community.
Oh, yeah, they've already done it.
Oh, they have? Okay.
They've done their outreach and everything.
So, I would suggest that we all spend a little extra time reading some of this stuff, because it's, it's, it's big, and it might not be the-
Well, seeing as how we're gonna be meeting in another two or three weeks, maybe we can, is this, is this a timeframe on it?
So, so right, well, I think ninety days, and it was received November thirteenth, so it was just received. Um, so we have to start, uh, going through it. So, right now, we're scheduled to meet on December tenth, and the only thing on that agenda is, um, Dollar General.
And there you either make or break at that?
So, I, normally, we would've met the first Monday, but that's a town, a special town meeting, right? It's still on, Kip?
Yes.
So, we scheduled for December tenth, which could be a, um, at seven o'clock. And as we know, those Dollar General meetings sometimes can go on, but as a facilitator, I can try to keep it shorter.
Well, it could be very short.
Um, so-
Didn't, didn't we pretty much ask them to come in with the changes that we requested, or it was done?
Yeah.
Didn't we do that?
I think that's what we told them.
I-
And then, you know, then you get into December, and then it's gonna be hard to find a meeting in the third and fourth week of December, so I, I guess we should put it, tack it on to the end of that.
Yeah, I think you're right. I mean, nobody's gonna, during the holidays, nobody's gonna-
At least, at least get it started.
Tack it on the end of what?
Uh, on December tenth. Put it on the agenda.
That's what the meeting's for, the, oh, this, this you-
No, I'm saying, I'm saying, put this one-
Oh, I'm sorry, okay, all right. Do you wanna start sooner then, so you've got plenty of time?
Well, we already posted it for seven o'clock, I don't wanna be messing, so I think we just-
Okay, all right.
If we do an hour and a half at Dollar General, and then we do an hour of this, I think that's a good-
Well, we have enough time to post it, John, so we could start it early. It's not like, you know, that's, it's more than two weeks away.
Uh, so which would be, which would be, um?
I would think, I, I sorta agree with Paul, I think we should probably start earlier, because we'll be here till-
Start this one, though, or the other one?
Oh, we can't, I guess you can't choose.
You do whatever, one of them, we should start earlier.
Why don't we post this one, you start this, and just go through it, look for it, at six.
At six. And then continue it if we need to, or whatever needs to happen.
And this one requires the, the mailing and everything, too, so this one, they do need two weeks, so they, do we have two weeks for them to do it?
Um, till December tenth? Yeah, we've got, we've got three weeks, I think. Or close to three weeks, anyway.
I was gonna say, if the meetings continue to have, as they have been, the Dollar General's gonna draw a lot more, uh, people, townspeople, so do we wanna put that last, or do we wanna put that first? Because they'll have to be here longer and save you.
Well, but no matter what, this isn't a ten-minute process here, so-
No, I, I know it, John, but I'm, probably not that many people are gonna come to this, the marijuana thing, but maybe it's the first one, I don't know, I could be wrong.
In Northampton, they set up-
The mayor's coming.
A dozen court parties outside this place.
But that's, they're selling it as a dispensary, Kip.
So, I, I, I think that's a wise thing, is to say, uh, six o'clock, um, to open this for a public hearing.
Okay, so post.
And it's the first one, so I think we can cut it off after an hour, because mostly, we're just getting a feel for it, we'll get an overview from the applicant, we'll hear from a couple neighbors, and then we'll decide if we wanna hire technical review people. That's basically what we do in the first meeting.
Post public hearing?
Yeah, let's do that.
For six?
Yeah, as long as you cut it off, I mean, that's where we're faulting, is not cutting things.
I'll have the applicants come prepared with a fifteen-minute presentation and take some questions, then figure out our next, our next, yeah.
Well, let's, let's, and let's have a Yankee swap in the middle of this, too, since it's Christmas time. Just kidding, just kidding.
All right. No, there's, there's enough of these for everybody, so I might, I'm gonna, I'm gonna take a copy of this thing.
Is that just a map, John, or what is?
It's the plans, like those plans they put up there.
They got maps here, they got, uh, you know, we're basically talking where the greenhouses are up at Pioneer, Inc. Gardens, is what we're talking about.
Well, if you've got it out, give me one out, by the review. I thought it was just-
How many of those have you got?
We got tons of maps, we only have, uh-
Well, where's the, I'll take another one.
We only have just a map, that's what we have.
That's, oh, sorry, that's just a map.
Yeah.
This thing is-
Oh, it's just a map?
Yeah.
It's the plans.
It's the plans?
It's the whole plans for the building. But it's not this.
Yeah, well, I want the verbiage.
You want this thing here?
Yeah.
All right, I'll get another one, somebody can get me one, okay? Is that all right?
Yeah.
All right.
Thank you, Paul.
You're welcome.
All right, so that's that plan, and then we were just supposed to be informed that, um-
So, that's over with, now we're onto something else?
Now, we're onto something else. This is mail, it says, this doesn't require action by the board, just acknowledged, received it, it's from Savage Farms Inc. to the planning, to the select board, that they purchased land that's under chapter sixty-one A. Um, we now, we now plan to sell that land and desire to remove it from sixty-one A, so the town gets first, gets dibs on it if they want, right? So, this is just acknowledgement that the planning board knows about this, it's, um, do you know where it is, Kip, or have you seen it?
Yeah, it's on Wells Cross Road. Maybe we should put a senior center there.
Which doesn't even, uh-
And bust them in and out of there? Okay, Savage Farm noticed the planning board that they plan to remove property from sixty-one Okay, Savage Farm noticed the planning board that they plan to remove property from 61A, is that what it is?
Yeah, on Wells Cross Road.
From 61A.
Does that so long five and 10, too?
On Wells.
No, I don't believe so, it, it's behind.
Cross Road.
It's behind the old Grupco House.
Right, I know that, they came in and they did an A and R, uh.
Yeah.
So, John, does that, who, who's the one that has to be, who makes that decision for the town?
Select board.
Select board, okay, so it's just, we're just mentioning it with really, no bearing on what we're doing.
No, I guess the select board could ask, if we had an opinion, we could give it to them.
Is that where they were gonna, like, a road, Pioneer?
They did some, they did some A and R work there, as you'd recently, for them.
Yeah, it's, our work is complete on that, it's.
Yeah.
It's not far from Pioneer Gardens, but it's not, okay.
I think they withdrew that, Kip, that road thing.
Part of it, part of it, just one little part of it, the rest of it, we, they went through with.
Right, they did the A and R, but they did, they were gonna do a road for Pioneer to get some of their land.
Kip, how is that, when they, when somebody withdraws it from 61A, they go back, what, five years?
For property taxes, yes.
And so, is that, um, based on what the property tax would have been year five, year four, year three? Is there interest added on to that, which there should be, interest added on?
There is, it's 5%.
So, year, year five would be whatever that tax burden would be?
Yes.
I think, I think there's like a renewal period, and if you do it at the renewal period, they don't go back, but if you try to pull it out before that renewal period's up, they have to go back five years.
Well, no, because every year's a renewal period, right.
Oh, is it? I thought there was like a 10-year thing.
No, every year's a renewal period, and they, they go back. The only time that they won't go back, uh, five years is if you, it hasn't been in the chapter program five years. So, in other words, if you have five acres of land and you put it in this year, and two years from now, you decide you want to sell and take it out, you only paid back taxes for the two years that it was in. Uh, where the five years comes into play is if it's been in for 10 years or more.
Yeah.
You only paid for five.
Yeah, they don't go back the whole time, they just go back five.
Right, so if you've had your property in for 30-plus years, you know, it was beneficial for you to do it.
If it's a short-term thing, it's not, because you end up paying the interest on top of the tax.
So, that's, that's all I see.
Who made those copies of the, the wording for the, the other one, by the way? All right, so we. Who made these?
The applicant.
Okay.
So, we have our last, uh, our next meeting set, um.
So, December 10th, six o'clock, we'll do, um, 198 Mill Village, seven o'clock, we'll keep Dollar General.
I was reading some data today, the, uh.
I want to hear from these guys.
Cost of a pound of marijuana has dropped from $2,500 out west down to somewhere in the 750, 500 to 750 range. So, what they're finding out there is, when you're taxing on a dollar basis versus a by weight basis, that, this income net was supposed to be, have, brought to the communities really is virtually nonexistent. As well as every dollar taken in, there's about 450 that goes out. So, it's turning out to be a negative, net negative versus net gain. So.
So, you'll get, so that, so we made two decisions tonight, you'll take them up, and I'll.
Well, I'm gonna have to go over that with Pat or somebody, because that's.
If, if, yeah, we just.
Yeah.
You want to send it to her, and she'll make it into the pretty thing, but all the written comments, and, and as he said, we should release it as soon as we can, so hopefully she's around.
I'm gonna leave a hole for that, for her writing it in, and I'll put the rest of it down as of minutes, I can do that, no problem. And I have minutes from the last meeting, too.
That's for the, uh, Set Right Solar thing, and then, and then he's got the sentence for the railroad yard solar thing, which is a little quicker. And we never hired, um, we, we hired, with the, with the Conservation Commission, we hired GRZ to do stormwater, but they didn't, they didn't do a lot, but they'll bill, they'll bill the applicant for that, so we don't.
You're talking about the railroad?
Railroad, yeah, we, we had, we had them do a little bit of a stormwater thing.
Stuff for us, yeah, so they need to.
Remember, we reported that a little bit in the last meeting, but, so, and that might still come back to us. All right, any other, uh, business? I don't see any other.
Do we have all our stuff we need for Dollar General, John?
So, um, Diane, Chandler in the office has a, a box, and she's keeping up with that, and we've received lots more letters from people. Um, we know, we were pretty clear at the last meeting, what we would need.
Right.
Boom, 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 um, and I'm at the point where, whatever they present us, no more comment, we make a decision, so, yeah.
But I, because they proposed maybe even putting a new road out onto Set Right, and they might come.
You mean Mill Village?
Mill Village, uh, they might come out with that, so I think we should have our highway superintendent weigh in on the curb cut on 5 and 10, and on, possibly on Mill Village. And I don't think we heard anything on any safety issues there from any public officials.
Something came up at, at the last meeting on the safety say, recommending that a road be, that entrance be put onto Mill Village.
Right, well, that's why I'm saying.
A resident recommended that.
I know, but they said they would, they thought about it, so they might bring that in, so let's have, let's have somebody weigh in on it, so we can say, yes, we had our highway superintendent, or whoever's gonna look at it, say, yes, they looked at it, and it's a, a good spot, a bad spot, whatever they come up with.
So, we've hired Ty and Bond to do the review, they did the review based on the plans they got, so they did a traffic analysis on 5 and 10. If they now come in with another proposal saying entrance or exit on Mill Village, then I think we would have a traffic engineer do it, not just our DP, not just our highway superintendent.
Well, the, the thing about it is, and I could be off, but I don't believe so, after having a lot of conversations, um, our highway superintendent is more focused on the condition of the road, and drainage, not necessarily access, safety, something that, that, you know, that's more the police department. Um, and when it comes to Route 5 and 10.
Well, we should get a, uh, something from both of them.
We should, but I, what I'm saying, and I said this earlier, is we can only do it on a proposal, we don't, it's not a hypothetical.
I don't think we got a, a proposal on the curb cut on 5 and 10, and I know we did that, we got that when Cumbies went in.
What do you mean? Because it was a new one, the, the one that they're using now is, is one that was approved by D, by, uh, Mass Dot years ago, so it's a little different. So, that's why we had a traffic engineer do it.
Mass Dot put that curb cut in a long time ago.
What's that?
Mass Dot put that curb cut, that they cut the trees around?
Yeah.
They put that in there years ago.
They're claiming that isn't really even a curb cut at one of the meetings.
No.
I think the state already did do that.
Yeah, that, that was, that was already approved.
Yeah.
It was never actually, it was never withdrawn, you know, the trees were a separate issue from that.
I know the trees were a separate issue, but.
I believe Citizens for Sustainable Development is pursuing Mass Dot to question that, but right now, the applicant says that they have it right away. That's the difference between what a, a community resident says and what the applicant says, is all, and we review the application, we gotta double check it. And what's in reality.